Meeting participation. Public meeting participation rules, please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Begin by saying your name and address. Give us your comments, opinions, or questions on issues, on issue being discussed. Or to ensure that everyone has time to speak. And that we can address other items on the agenda. We may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow one, allow you one additional time period to provide new information. I'd be respectful of the planning commission and your neighbors. Thank you for attending, Tom Hilbert, Chair. Okay, and we have approval of minutes, August 30. Two thousand twenty-one.
Come on.
Chuck.
I'll support.
Michelle supported.
Did we have any public opinion? Did anybody? Was there any?
No, we're not there yet.
No, we're not there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay, all in favor of approving minutes, August 30. All right, post, okay, approved. Okay, no public comment. And with public comment, if it's in regard to the case, you can, you can comment prior to, but it would probably be beneficial if you commented during the, went during the review of the case, but whatever however anybody feels. Do we have anybody online that, are you, okay, you guys are good, okay. Anybody online that wants to make a public comment? Not necessarily regarding the case. Okay. Correspondents. Report number oh-five-two-one-two-zero-two-one. By Rick Duel.
Chair, you actually will have to follow through with the amendment language. All of new item business two, which is now number one in the amendment, needs to be voted upon.
Okay. Prior to, after public comment, you're saying?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We're into your business.
All right.
And we do have Denise, she actually, she.
She actually wrote that.
Yeah, if we want to ask her, or field those questions.
Denise, you actually wrote the amendment? Do you have any, you want to just?
Yeah, so this, we're talking about the parking amendment, correct?
Correct.
So this came about, I think, because Nathan, you had someone requesting to build a parking lot larger than what was allowed by ordinance, is that right?
Right.
So what we did was because there's really no provision in the ordinance to provide for any sort of flexibility in parking. That's something that's becoming more and more common. Most of the communities I work with have some kind of language, allowing the planning commission to give some flexibility in the parking requirements. It's something that's, it's kind of difficult to send to the ZBA because sometimes it's difficult to, like, if you want more parking than what the ordinance allows, because it sets a limit for, you know, excessive parking. It's a difficult thing to go to the ZBA and actually get approved, because it doesn't only fit the standards. So what a lot of communities have is this language that you see in front of you in the red, which gives the, the planning commission the ability to deviate from the parking standards. This also comes in handy, because that table of, you know, parking space requirements is not always accurate for every type of use that comes in. So what happens many times, let's say it's a, let's say it's a medical office or something. What your parking requirements say may not match up with what that medical office knows that they need. It may actually, they may actually say, you know, we've been doing this for years. We know we need less than what your ordinance says. So having this language in there that allows the planning commission to, to, to deviate from that, but when someone brings a proposal in to say, hey, I, I have some, you know, reason here why I want to deviate from that. It's helpful, so most of the communities that I work with do have that. And then what you're seeing is just the strikeouts of where the other language wouldn't make sense, like setting that cap on, you know, no more than additional fifty percent that, you know. So what I did was I struck out that, I struck out the, the language about just simply reduction of parking spaces and just made it more of a general flexibility language. So I guess I'll throw that out for discussion.
Anybody have any? Comments?
I think it gives us flexibility where we need to, to encourage those folks in the community something special, and we can oversee everything, but this gives us the flexibility of being able to address those situations.
It seems, it seems like if it, if they could get it to conveniently fit in that site that they have, I, I don't have a problem with extra parking spots.
And to that point, this was a unique case, because oftentimes it's the exact opposite. That is the ask. This was, this was an issue where as Denise stepped on some of the clarifications, when you're looking at the definition in the medical field of one parking spot for every hundred and fifty square foot of waiting room space. It, it can impede certain businesses. So, so this, this basically allows some flexibility rather than saying the only avenue for approach, which you would have seen in some of these, in your review from Mr. Duel, was if this language was, were to remain, then every case would have, that would have this unique ask. You'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals. And it's, it's, it's kind of an improper format for even that approach. So this just cleans up, this is one more thing that we found as we're working through this ordinance one forty-two, that we can now afford a little flexibility, where unfortunately it was very black and white before.
So I guess this was, this, the purpose of having it at this meeting was just to get feedback, I believe, correct, Nathan? This isn't, you, you didn't do like a public hearing notice or anything yet to change?
No, we didn't, this was site plan, so.
So, okay, so this is just to get feedback, and then we'll go through the, you know, the actual adoption process.
Well, we have, it would be to a recommendation to the board, and then the board would have to go through the adoption process. And that would be an introduction, and then adopted at the subsequent.
But, planning commission has to hold a public hearing first before it can go to the board.
Yeah.
So you, you know, first it would be set it, said, when do you want a public hearing? And then do that board process, so.
Okay, so. So then, we would not make a recommendation on this? Tonight Denise, is that what you're saying?
Well, you, you can't until you hold your public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Because that was, that, when I actually reached out, that was a portion that I was confused on, because it was stated that the only thing that would have to be, and I guess it was, discusses the, the language to the amendment or to the zoning ordinance, that was the outlier, I guess, because it meant all the criteria for site plan review for the case that would be tonight. And that was part of, even when I, I asked legal questions, does that work? If that case were to be approved at tonight's site plan contingent upon board approval, that would meet a standard that, it wouldn't, anything would fully take place until you go through the entire, you have to have your public hearing. But then this case wouldn't have to be reheard, because there's still stipulations that action can be based upon board approval.
Yep.
So it's a little convoluted, but this way we address the language as we should, but we also don't impede the business from hitting their markers of progress moving forward, because then they will have to go through the infrastructure stuff as we're talking about, water, sewer, all those, all those infrastructure improvements can then start taking place. So it's just one way to keep the ball rolling.
So. We can, we, so what are we saying? We can approve this, or?
You, you can actually, you can say that you're, you're supportive of the recommendation of this language, and then at the next meeting, or it can be a public hearing to touch upon the language of this amendment. And then it just seems like it's, it's a half step ahead of, you know, one, one of the next step, I suppose, it's half steps, but.
The site plan that you're reviewing tonight is the one that's requesting the additional parking, correct? So what you're doing is when you review that site plan and you make a recommendation, or when you approve, if you're approving the site plan, you're approving it contingent upon this language being adopted. So you, this, this site plan doesn't have to come back before the planning commission. This is the only night that it has to, it's just that you're putting that contingency that you, that this language is going to change.
And, and then Denise. Sections of section A here, one through, one through eight. The only thing we're changing is we're keeping everything one through eight, except the end of, the last sentence of section eight, and then we're taking out section nine entirely.
And then adding a D, and you're keeping B and C. I didn't put it all in here just to simplify it, you're keeping B and C, and then you're putting in that flexibility and D.
Okay, and that is under, that's still under? Section A.
Well, it, it's under. You mean the flexibility? It's its own letter, it's D. Because there are some other standards you're not changing in, in the parking section. That's B and C, I just didn't put them in this amendment just to make it shorter, but they're still remaining.
Okay, you don't, um. The only thing this, you have a capital D, and we don't have capital B.
She's adding that.
I know, I understand that, but we don't have an A B.
She said she didn't add B or C.
I didn't put it in this amendment document, but you have a B and C. I'm opening it right now.
I did make you host if you wanted to share your screen, Denise.
B, okay.
Are you seeing it?
Okay, so it's going right at the end.
Yep, so.
All right, all right. He's going right, yeah, D is going right at the end of the.
Yep, it's going at the end of the whole section, because it basically gives you flexibility, not just in the parking spaces, in the entire parking section. So that's why we're putting it all the way at the end.
Okay, I got it. Any other questions regarding? In a minute. How many days north do we need?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, so we could get it on the agenda for? What would be next meeting?
Yeah, you would hit your marker for your subsequent meeting, your regularly scheduled meeting.
Do we, we as, we as a board are going to recommend this?
Yep. I mean, I guess that would be this discussion, if you're willing to recommend that, that would be.
Recommend to go forward with this, yes. So somebody's got to make a motion as to.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the public committee.
And Chuck supports it, all right. Do we need a roll, or?
Yes.
Roll call, all right.
So we'll go Lefina.
Yes.
Pauline.
Yes.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes, okay. That will go forward to the next meeting for to have a public hearing. Tonight, if that part of the permit tonight, we will.
And then you, then that would be the stipulation to that site plan review. Obviously, now some other questions have come up to, to bear, but the designer is online for that case.
Okay, now, so now we're ready for case, right?
Yep.
All right. Case number P zero-five dash twenty-one, Alpina Retail Management LLC requests a site plan review for commercial development consisting of a medical office and a restaurant with a drive, with drive-through facilities. Property is located at eleven twenty-five M thirty-two West Parcel Number zero-one-two zero-two-nine zero-zero-zero zero-two-one zero-zero in a community business B three zone district. Done. Amendment to the section three twenty-five parking situation. Okay. The, do we have a representative from the owner developer?
Yeah. My name is Michael Gold with Stonefield Engineering and Design. And then with me tonight is Rachel Miller and Jordan Chapman with, with applicant Alpina Retail Management LLC.
The floor is yours, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank you all for your time this evening. We're really excited to bring forth this site plan application. Really what we're seeking is site plan approval for the commercial development located at the one-one-two-five M thirty-two. It's just west of South Bagley Street between the Meyer Gas Station and the existing Culvers Restaurant. The proposed development's going to consist of a Well Now Medical Office and then a drive-through Starbucks Restaurant. Currently, the site is about one point three-six acres, and it's been historically vacant. It's east of that gas station, and then west of the Culvers Restaurant, just north of the Meyer Parking Lot. It's one of the final vacant pieces along the M thirty-two corridor, and we're looking to bring life to that vacant piece of property. So, as stated before, it's going to be a fifty-eight-hundred-square-foot multi-tenant building, and that's where the Well Now and Starbucks will sit with an outdoor patio for the Starbucks Restaurant. Access is going to come off of the M thirty-two corridor, it's going to be a restricted right-in, right-out access drive. And then we're also proposing cross-access with the Culvers to the east and cross-access with the Meyer to the south. The site's going to be self-parked with fifty-one parking spaces, and then planted with various trees and shrubs, meeting the township requirements. If I can, I don't know if I can share my screen, but I wasn't sure if you guys had a chance to look at the architecturals. But it's going to be made up of brown and gray brick veneer, stone veneer along the bottom, ephes and wood panel siding.
Yes. I, I did make you host, so now you can share your screen if you'd like.
Perfect. Let me know if everyone can see that.
Yep.
Yes, got it.
So this will be the view from the M thirty-two. It's the north elevation, so as I was saying before, it's going to be made up of around here, the brick veneer with some stone veneer on the bottom, and wood panel siding and some ephes. As well as the rooftop mechanical units will be screened behind this parapet. So, we have been in receipt of the review letter that you guys issued. So I just wanted to go over a couple of the comments in there. I know the driveway width was brought up as twenty-four feet, where the minimum's thirty. We're currently working with M dot on this road configure, or the access drive configuration. And upon final submission, it will be to township standards as well as M dot. And then there was a snow storage comment, so I just kind of wanted to display here. If you guys can see, the areas where we can have various snow storage, it would be in the northeast corner of our parking lot, as well as the west side and in the southeast corner. And then lastly, it was the parking issue. Really, we're proposing fifty-one parking spaces here. It's driven by the Starbucks and Well Now tenant requirements. Typically, they like to see between twenty and thirty parking spaces each, and that's it's really just to limit the overflow onto adjacent properties, so that way they can be self-parked and not have to have any customers walking from, you know, to the, the south or the east. And we believe it's a good balance between the tenant requirements as well as the township requirements, so. Again, that's our application here tonight. I want to thank you for your time this evening. I know our team and Starbucks and Well Now are very excited to bring this application to your community. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your guys' questions. Thank you.
And you actually did have a good question, that you are a representation of a neighborhood parcel, so if you have questions.
I'm the general manager of Culvers, and I was just curious about the connection from that parking lot to our parking lot.
Yeah, what?
Is there a plan, is there a plan to be a connection, or no?
Yeah, here, let me, sorry, I should have not stopped sharing my screen. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
We're proposing some cross-access on the northeast side. Right up here.
Okay.
Agreement in place for that as well, I believe.
Okay, because we did just get new ownership, and as far as I'm aware, the new owner does not know anything about this.
Okay. Um, we can connect either now or later, but there's a document in the title work, which, again, we can discuss at any time. That explains that there is a access agreement along the western portion of your property to grant access to our property. And this actually kind of came up at the last, the last minute, we didn't intend to, and then we kind of needed to. But in any event, we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Okay, so I can get your contact information after?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
What was your name?
My name is Danielle.
Danielle, okay.
She's, she is the manager, but she's not the owner, so I think you would have the, the contact that would be with, with the owner, correct?
Yes.
Actually, if you, if you have an email or a telephone number, that way you guys could share it, if you don't want to stick around for the whole rest of the meeting. You can probably exchange that information if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I can exchange that information now.
Sure.
So I can give you my information, and then I can give you the owner's information.
Go ahead.
So my first name is Danielle, last name is R I E M A N. And then my phone number is nine-eight-nine-five-nine-zero-three-six-one-one. And the owner is Ross, R O S S. Last name is Fernandez, F E R N A N D E Z. Phone number is nine-eight-nine-six-one-five-six-four-zero-four. And I can also get you his email as well.
Sure, go ahead.
It's R O S S. Period. W H S at gmail dot com.
Okay, great, thank you. And my cell, my cell phone number is two-four-eight-nine-zero-nine-seven-zero-seven-two.
Can you repeat the last four, please?
Seven-zero-seven-two.
Rachel Miller.
Thank you. Correct, Rachel Miller.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then also Rachel and the connection to the Meyer, or to Meyer is, that's not to, that's not along the west edge, that would be in the south, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And Meyer is aware of this.
That's correct. Um, we, we have a, we have a strong relationship with Meyer. We're the, probably the, not probably, we are the largest developer of Meyer Outlets across the Midwest, and we, they're aware that we are proposing this access, and they're willing to grant us an easement to do so.
Okay, good, good.
And obviously, I'll get you all that documentation.
Yes, and I, I talked to them about it, and they said you, you guys already had a permit in the works, and so it's going to be and they're going, their, their requirements are, or least are, at least ours or more, so whatever they, whatever they will approve for you, then will probably be good for us, too.
Perfect.
Any other? That was told or was, but I didn't see, maybe I didn't look careful enough. Sidewalks.
Yes, that, that is correct. There is an existing sidewalk along the M thirty-two that we are proposing to connect into. If you can see here, this will be the pedestrian access to the front of the building.
Show me, please.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay. But it won't run to, to M thirty-two, correct, the sidewalk per se?
It, it connects into the existing sidewalk up there, correct? Right up here.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Right here.
Good. See that, Chuck?
Yeah, I certainly can, that, what about the rear of the, the facility? Have we?
Yes, there, there will be, from the south parking lot, there will be sidewalk connection here. And all along the west side of the building, or? Yep.
That sidewalk in the rear, that is that, that just picks up from the sidewalks in the rear of your building, and then moves to the front to the sidewalk adjacent to thirty-two?
Yes, so in the rear, it rides along the, the west side of the building, comes and connects to the front of our building, and then you can also take it up north to the M thirty-two.
Go back to the back again, please, if you would.
Yes, yes, sir.
Just a bit more there. Yeah. Okay, so that's the rear exit. Now.
Correct.
What, what have you done as far as the Americans with Disabilities, as far as access to the rear of the building and access? Are there going to be any painted movement areas or electric wheelchairs within the parking area?
So, are you referring to striping for the pedestrian access over here?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that if I come to the, if I come to the facility and I'm in an electric wheelchair.
Yes, okay.
From the rear, I have access to the rear of your building.
You would, if you would come in and we provided ADA parking spaces up front to be right next to the front entrances with striping laid out here.
Yeah. So anyway, so that, you addressed it then?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Anything else? Anybody else have any? We will go over the.
We have, we do have one question online. From Miss Karen Savage, are there only two ADA spots?
There, there will be three.
That meets the requirements, meets the requirements for that number of parking spots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else on the chat there, Nathan? And the comment was, that doesn't seem like many, but.
Doesn't seem like many, but it meets.
But it meets the ADA requirements, is I guess our answer.
I asked if there are any other additional comments. Seeing anybody?
Okay. Alright, do we have uh, we have a site plan review for report number zero five two one, two zero two one, and uh, I guess we need a motion to accept that and Larry? And, and Norm, okay, favor. Alright, opposed?
It should be roll call.
Oh, roll call, go ahead.
Uh, Paulie?
Yes.
Uh, Woodrow?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
The Beaver?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot your name again. Michael, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
So you, you have a, a motion to are you accepting uh, Rick Gull's findings of that, or are you just approving the site plan review at this point?
I think we should uh, uh, go and do that, have, have you received that, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, then your, your motion was to accept uh, the correspondence and Rick Gull's findings of fact?
Right.
Okay. So then now you'd be moving into, if you're approaching uh, approval of site plan, this is where you would make a motion with the stipulations upon the approval. And obviously, one of them being a contingent upon board of trustee approval is to the amendment of section three twenty-five is automatically one of the stipulations.
So are we gonna uh, go through each one of these?
If you wanna go, you can go through Rick's findings.
Is that, this, are we, do we wanna do that?
It's your, it's your, it's your board chair.
I've read them, and if, or should, you wanna go through each one, or do you wanna just, or do we wanna uh?
I believe Michael's addressed the ones where there was a no.
Okay, okay, that's, I just wanna know, that's all, yeah.
I mean, you've just accepted them into the minutes as a finding of fact, you don't need to read through them if you don't want to, but it can be helpful for that.
I guess as we stated before, the uh, um, ingress egress will be approved by M dot, and you guys are working with M dot, so the uh, motion will include a, a provision that, that you have a permit. And then also that you have the agreement with Meyer and, and Culvers if you still wanna uh, make those uh, connections to them, correct? And I think Rachel said that, that was uh, in the works, so.
Correct.
Wow.
There she is.
There she is.
Happy birthday.
Yeah.
I was hoping no one would notice, but
No, you're on the full screen right now.
I was gonna say, it must be on the big screen or something.
So we, as it stands right now, we may have three stipulations, uh, approval, M dot approval of ingress egress on thirty-two, and then also uh, an agreement with uh, the potential cross-connections with Meyer and Culvers. Uh, and then also contingent upon board of trustee approval of, of the amendment of section three twenty-five.
Correct.
Are there any other stipulations?
Anybody?
Well, I, can I add one thing?
Yes, sure, yeah.
Um, in the table of uses, I would add a P under the B three district for healthcare clinics.
Section P, section P, and I'm sorry, I kind of missed the, yeah, Denise.
Sorry, it's still, it can be part of the same amendment.
Okay, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion as stated.
And we will have a, a roll call on that.
Okay, uh, here, and, uh, Woodrow?
Yes.
Herein?
Yes.
Uh, The Beaver?
Yes. Yes.
Silver?
Alright.
Okay. Site plan has been approved with uh, four stipulations, slash three, upon digital, uh, fourth of fall to the amendment of section three twenty-five. Um, so, Mr. Gold, I believe, with that being said, uh, your draft of the hard copy of your site plan review will be signed by the chair, uh, and we will get that back off in the mail to you, uh, probably uh, either tomorrow or per se Monday morning.
Perfect, thank you, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A pure lack of very nice site plans.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And happy birthday.
Have a good evening.
Okay. There was uh, somebody named Fernandez on, for a second. I wonder if that was your owner, I don't know. He didn't ask any questions.
Okay, any side review, the hosts, uh, and the, the meeting is yours, and with that being said, Michelle, you, you know how to
I know how to work too.
Okay, just record it to the desktop, thank you so much.
You're very welcome, have a great evening.
I, I
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thank you for coming, yeah, and uh, I know that
There was a Fernandez on there, I thought he was part of the building group, but he might have been yours, but just make sure you guys connect.
I know that these developers, uh, they will make all the contacts.
Okay. Yeah, I talked to him last night.
Because they don't like to slow stuff down, so.
I talked to him last night, as far as we knew, there is nothing, but maybe something happened today.
There you go.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you, have a good night.
Danielle. Have a good night.
And with that being said, thank you very much, Denise, thank you very much, um, I will email you my comments to the drafts, I thought I did already, but I will get that off to you as well, so thank you very much.
Okay, Nathan, one question, um, we don't have a, a signee for the uh, permitting.
Uh, what, what I will do is I will scan them tomorrow, email them, they can print them, sign them, scan them back, and then I'll attach them to that, so that, but they will need both your signatures.
Okay.
And then that's how I'll do it.
Okay, just, you know, you know it's legal, so.
Yeah, no, we can, we can do it electronically, that is one I say, so, okay, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Okay, Denise, I think, uh, you can uh,
Um, so ju- just, real quick, you all received, I believe, um, a document that was dated nine seven twenty-one, that was the marijuana text that, um, remember at the last meeting, when we were debating, you know, what, where it should be allowed, what should be the regulations, and I said, I would just put something together for you to, to look at as a draft, so does everybody have that?
See that, oh, from the, from your previous, no?
I, I don't know, I, I sent it, um, I don't know if it went out in your packet though, I sent it back, it would have been at the beginning.
We got it, but
No, we didn't, I
I didn't get that.
It was emailed to us, yeah, I, I hope to, or maybe just to me, it might be.
It's got some blue text at the top and then some red, real red and black, as you go down farther in the document. If not, I can put it up on the screen.
Why don't you do that, just because, just because?
No problem, let me get it, I wanna get it resized here. Alright. Um, hang on, just one minute, let me find it, I got too many things open.
It's to Nathan and me.
Alright.
And I didn't forward it. That's my fault, Denise.
That's okay.
That's Nate, that's Nathan's fault, he's not here.
I just assumed it was going out in the packet, so, um, that's okay. So, I mean, you remember that conversation we had, right, about, let's take a look at some possible language? Um, so this would be your zoning language, so not licensing language, so, you know, we've, know we've talked about several times, if you move forward with this, you, you're gonna have two different documents, you're gonna have zoning language, and then you're gonna have a licensing ordinance, which the planning commission doesn't approve, but we would still, yeah, I, I would assume you guys would still look at it, and that would be completely a township board ordinance, because it's not within your zoning. So what I did is I put together just a draft, if you choose to go forward with this, this is language that would go in your zoning ordinance, okay? Um, we don't have to talk about everything on here, there's just a few things that are important, but the first section, um, oh, by the way, I sort of mixed several communities together, I picked some out of the different communities and put it together for you, so I used Alpina, City of Alpina, and then Rogers Township, and also Harrisville. Um, obviously, you would need some, uh, some definition amendments in order to make sure that all of these types of facilities are included in your um, zoning ordinance. It, you know, the, the, the state law makes it a little confusing, because they differentiate, they use the word establishment um, when they're talking about medical marijuana, and they use the word facility when they're talking about recreational marijuana. So, you know, I don't know why they can't just use the same words, but whatever, so they, so you've actually got two sets of definitions under marijuana establishment, and these are the, these are the terms that are used on the screen right now, under the medical law, and then I'm gonna scroll down medical facilities, which is, um, so, there that, we don't have to talk about, they're, they're just the definitions through a state law, I'm just pointing it out. So you already have some definitions in your ordinance, just definition for marijuana itself, um, what a person is, primary caregiver, those types of things, qualifying patient, so those would all stay the same. So this is what we were really talking about at the last meeting, where we were struggling, if you allow these, where would be the appropriate districts? So what I did was I took your use table, and I included the uses, the growers, micro businesses, retailers, processors, safety compliance, facilities, and secure transporters, and then I would consider them all special uses, which I think you were in agreement with last time. And I just put some S's where it made sense, okay, so, um, now again, you can, you don't have to accept this table, you can, you can change this, but growers, and we did get through growers when we were talking at the last meeting about being an ag or, you know, forest rec district, also, um, in your manufacturing districts, that would make sense for indoor grows, I don't know why you would not allow them there, so, um, micro businesses and retailers, so that's the real question, okay, so I tried to put them in the table according to pretty much where the city allows them to try to match it up. Okay, so, in the city, so on the blue text right under the table, the city allows growers in the industrial district, which makes sense, so that would match up with your manufacturing district. Um, processors, industrial, so, um, I put those in your manufacturing district. And then, so the provisioning centers, the city actually allows them in the office service district, um, the commercial corridor district, which is, you know, like a, along Chisholm Street, and then uh, B two, B three, I one, and I two, so I'm gonna scroll just a little bit to, okay, so the commercial corridor district is right adjacent, it, it, it abuts up against your B two. Okay, so that, so the city's already allowing it in commercial corridor, it abuts it on you, your B two on US twenty-three south, and then, um, the city, let's see, does also allow them in their B two. And that, the, the B two on US twenty-three north, their B two and their office district, both of which allow them abut up to your B two, so I was like, alright, that makes sense then to probably also allow them in your B two, like I said, if you go through this, so the table is showing retailers in B two and B three. And then
Denise, is, are there B one, B two, B three essentially the same as our definition of?
Not, not exactly, so there, it, it's a, I mean, it's similar, it's similar, they don't, they don't match up perfectly in terms of what uses are allowed, but it does with these particular uses, in, in terms of just all uses in your zoning, it doesn't match perfectly, it's pretty darn close, though.
So I was talking to one of their, uh, Paul Sabrin, he's been on the board for thirty-some years on the planning commission, I was talking to him, and we were sharing notes, and he said we don't quite they aren't exactly the same, but
Not exactly, but it's very, very close, you know, and, and that was the intent when we rewrote this thing, is to, you know, match it up as much as possible to the cities, so there isn't a huge transition when you cross that line. Um, so allowing, if you were gonna allow retailers, the B two and B three would match up nicely with the cities, and then also manufacturing, um, the, your manufacturing districts, and then the safety compliance facilities and secure transporters, they have secure transporters only in manufacturing, but I don't see why it, it wouldn't make sense in your B three, because that's a, that's, your B three is more of a heavier commercial district. So, the other one, the safety compliance, um, I put in B three and manufacturing in yours, in theirs, they actually allowed a, like, you know, safety compliance is more like, you know, they're testing things. Um, so it's, to me, it seemed to match up with your B three and manufacturing, and in the city, you know, they actually do allow it in their office and their commercial corridor, and then again, B two on B three and I one and I two, so I mean, you could add the safety compliance, I suppose, and secure transporters to B two, so I guess that's, that's the type of stuff that, that, you know, we should discuss, I'm just real quick going down. Um, your, your OS district, so even though the city allows these things in OS, I wouldn't necessarily do that in the township, because yours is right abutting up against residential, your OS, so it just, to me, it doesn't, that doesn't fit in your OS, that's why I, I left those out. Um, and then the, the last consideration for, when you're talking about this, is if you do allow retailers in B two, you need to take a look at that overlay zone, because, um, remember, we took, put that B two overlay all the way up in US twenty-three north, all the way out M thirty-two west. So I would say you restrict that to only those lots with a B two or B three base. Okay, so I wouldn't necessarily say anywhere in that overlay, because then, I mean, you could literally be right next to residential, I guess you could with just saying the base, but you're more likely to end up with something next to residential if you open it wide up in that overlay zone. Um, so I guess, I don't wanna go into the rest of this, I think we just kinda need an open discussion, cuz that's where we left off last time, in terms of like where, what, what you think, and I'll go back up to the table here, so you can look at it while you're, while you're discussing, you know, what districts make sense to you guys. Silence. Can everybody see that table alright?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, if you just start from the top, the growers, probably those are the obvious districts, right?
Yep.
It's really those the next to, the micro businesses and retailers, is that something that you would want in those B two and B three districts?
One, back to growers, Denise, like, what about, um, One, back to growers, Denise, like what about, um. Some of these large, uh, there's large vacant buildings. I know in the city there is, and I'm sure we've got a few around too. What if? Um, somebody wanted to do like a growing operation in, in those and. I guess it would depend on the, uh, the zoning of that. But say, say it was in a B. Lot of probably R and B zones.
Mm-hmm.
I've been thinking of like in the city, uh. Where the, uh, Western Auto and that, uh, if you remember where that AMP used to be AMP, then it was Ripley Street Station. There's a huge, there's, you know, like some huge buildings that are, are not occupied and. Why wouldn't we, uh, know needens?
Right.
You know, why would, why would, what would be wrong with, or just? Why do we think we wouldn't allow that there if, or, or? I mean, yeah, I'm, this is a question, but not just Denise of the board too. I mean, I'm just wondering.
The only thing that I'm, I mean, and I'm in agreement with Denise that we should really be. I'm not saying the only thing, but when we're thinking about where this is. The, the, the closeness with, with heavy residential. We have to keep that into consideration, because no one wants to live next door to a facility. Um, unless they do, I'll live next sort of facility, but not for the most part, you're not gonna get a lot of people in favor of that. But I, I don't know where these zones are. I don't have that map memorized in my head, but when we think about things like that, those areas where we know there's a. Oh, thanks Denise. Where we know there's a void. Um. I don't think we should limit it. I think that's when we get to the thing, the, the pieces where the individuals are coming to us with their plans. And that's where we can.
And some of these overlay districts are kind of, uh. Situated in residential areas too, right?
Well, so, so the one you're, this isn't an overlay, but the, the one I have up on the screen right now is a B, B two, you know, on US twenty-three south. Gotta grab a drink. And I mean, the concern, of course, is the residential behind. Right? So that's the, what you're, that's the concern with that area. If I go over here, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit though, because. So the overlay on twenty-three north. You know, goes all the way up to Long Lake Road. So some of these that are, you know, like down here at the, at the, where it's a butts up against the city. That would make sense. Um. Because, you know, even behind some of these lots, and even if they were out on twenty-three, you still have more B two. And then up here, if you go up to section thirty-four, got a lot of lots that again have B two out behind them. So, but they're all, but they're all backed up against residential. So I mean, that's. Well, that's why you, that's why it's a special use, because one of the special use standards is that it's not negatively affecting neighboring properties. So, you know, it's gonna be a balancing act. Um, M thirty-two. Again, is that completely the same thing on M thirty-two? Because. These are really deep lots. For a lot of cases. Now those might be already developed. I'm just looking at the map. I don't know which ones are which, but yeah, really big area of B two here. Um, in section twenty. So, and the residential doesn't start till, you know, halfway into the section. And but then as you get farther out here, you know, the, this overlay, yeah, I would not have them. Allowed. Out here in, at the edge of the township, because those are. Really residential lots. And then the point was. That they could allow B two uses that are compatible with residential. So I don't think. Marijuana establishment would be one of those uses. So you gotta be a little bit careful. But again, that's why it's a special use, you know, and that's why. Applicant would have to look at that and say, okay, these are the special use standards that they, that they have, and it does talk about adverse effects on neighboring properties. So. It's gonna be up to them to choose a location that. Maybe doesn't back up to residential in order to more guarantee, you know, an approval.
We have a comment here. It says, can I point out that Frederick Township and Mansalot Townships? Do not have specific zoning requirements to grant licenses. All requests are judged on appropriateness. Like not opposed by neighbors, not near schools, et cetera. That's, that's a comment someone has made. Karen Savage. Thank you.
Yep, I'm just checking on something here.
So it basically be on a case by case.
It appears this one would be, yeah, but those, and those two dungeons.
Yeah.
I'm just opening up, uh, hang on just a second. Just double checking something. Well, so, um, I don't know about Mansalona Township, but Frederick Township. So I actually wrote the Frederick Township ordinance. They do actually have zoning requirements. They are, all of their marijuana facilities are listed as special uses. In their ordinance. So, and they're listed as special uses in. The following districts. They're all, almost all of them are listed in industrial, uh, recreational, forest, commercial and mixed use. The only one that's not allowed in any, in, there's only one that's different. That's provisioning centers are allowed in, in, they're not allowed in industrial. So they actually do, do the same thing. They have to go through their special use standards. Um, to grant those.
Okay.
So. And then if you're looking at your, you don't have a whole lot of B three. You know, but it's, it's located here on M thirty-two and then. Again, here in, in section thirty-three. Right there along. US twenty-three. I'm not sure where that looks like. It's right before Worth Road, I think. Yeah, you don't have a lot of it. Um, the one that it wouldn't make sense is out here in section thirty-two where it's off a Worth Road, because it's completely surrounded by residential. Um. So I guess that's, so those are the things to think about if. If, uh, you want to allow these things in, in B two and, and B three. And manufacturing. Do you want me to go back to the table or you want me to leave this map up?
The table would be great Denise, please.
Yep.
That's the topic that we have to.
Yep.
Okay.
So I guess, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You did send this to Tom and. Nathan?
Mm-hmm.
So are you gonna send it to us?
I already did.
Okay.
Great.
Just know.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would, I would have included everybody. I don't know if I have every, yeah, I think I do have everybody.
I think they'll, yeah.
But I just, I thought it was a packet item, so that's okay.
Um, Denise, the secure transporter, is that like a delivery service for the business? So what would be if we had a provisioning center in B two? Why would we not want a secure transporter in B two as well?
And that's why, well, see. So again, this was, I'm not, you know, I don't know specifically, like I've never actually seen one of these, but I'm thinking that they're gonna have. Might not be for that particular business. Maybe it's a transporter. That, you know, works for all of the different marijuana businesses.
Like a DoorDash of weed.
Yeah.
Um, that would be my only thing is why wouldn't we have the transportation? E- even the micro businesses, if they're able to, you know. Have that. But the provisioning centers, all, most of them now are delivering it right to your doorstep. So I don't know why we wouldn't. Cause we've had, for any provisioning center to come in, in my head, and I'm new here, but. If I have a provisioning center and I'm in B two and I want to offer delivery services, but we're not, we don't have the zoning for that, we'd have to come to the board to amend, correct?
Right. So I guess the same thing for, um, safety compliance. You know, where they're gonna do testing and stuff. I mean.
I don't know where those are. So I don't know if those are even in the centers themselves or. I'm picturing a giant warehouse where people are just sitting around. Checking weed out. Like, that's what I'm picturing, but.
I guess I kind of am too, but.
Yeah.
But then again, it could look like an, you know, an office building too. I don't.
It might, we don't know.
I've never seen one. That's the thing. I've. I've never seen most of these. I've just seen, obviously, the retailers and the communities that you.
Right.
They're obvious, you know?
I mean, from what, what they explained to me, the only retailer I talked to was that. You know, this is not, this is very professionally run.
Oh, they're.
Operation. And so I, I would think this would be some kind of a. A, a lab that would be set up.
Yeah.
However, they determine the, uh.
Well, and then if that's the case, then I would say we would want it in. If we're gonna allow them to be a grower, we would want to allow the safety and, and possibly the transporter, because the growers got to get it somewhere, right? Got to get it to somewhere. So I would suggest. Um, you know, adding the safety and, and the transportation to B two and to, um, what would that be? A. What's that for?
Forest. Forest rec.
A, okay.
Yeah, the ag.
Yeah, so ag would be these dark bluish green areas.
I might be taking this all too literally and, but now even going back to that table. If we're gonna allow it to grow in the forest recreation district, the FR, then giving them the zoning to do the compliance and the transportation there too. It just kind of eliminates the headache of having to. You know, if that's what they do, it gives them all their options there.
Because these would all be by special permit. So we all, we always have one more shot of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Compliance and transportation is that basically like an office where they work out of, uh, they don't. Would they be? I, I don't know.
I believe it's the transportation from the, either the facility or the store. To your house for transportation. And then the testing and safety compliance. If they're growing it here, if we, i- if. You know, let's just say someone decides that they want to grow it here. They're gonna do their compliance and, you know, testing before they send it off to their. It's the R and D, you know?
I guess we need to see what.
We need to know more about what that is. I would think it would be at the same facility that's being grown now.
All together.
Right, but also some. Storefronts may also do their own compliance checks, whatever that might be. I think, I think when it comes to the compliance part is what we need a little bit more background.
I would think that that has to be a, a separate, you know.
Business.
Third party that does safety compliance checks.
True, true.
Cause I mean, the one I visited, I mean, they don't, they. Everything comes.
To them.
To them in a package and it's been all, all, whatever's been done. Processing, testing as well, and all completed and it comes to them and it's some kind of a. Whether it's edible or smokable or whatever it might be.
It's already done.
Yeah.
Storefronts.
Yeah, they don't.
They just do retail.
Yes. Yep, it's fidgets already, or widgets, whatever that is. It's widgets already when it gets to the store.
And I mean. The same thing for the transporters. I mean, if there's enough facilities, you would think that a separate transporter business, you know. Would open up to say, all right, I'm gonna serve all of these facilities and be that secure transporter. So it could be a completely separate thing.
I feel like that was something that was discussed with the insurance gentlemen. Um, that each place has to have their own, but I mean.
Okay.
I think that'd be a good job. Imagine that, like DoorDash. I'm like, my nephew does DoorDash down at school. He works for an hour a night and gets two hundred bucks, you know, like.
That, uh, place in Harrisville, they have signs up that they deliver.
Yeah, the place in Ascot delivers.
Yeah, that was here.
Daily.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're always here.
Yeah.
So I think if we learn more, a little bit more about compliance, we could decide where we need to.
You need better descriptions of what. What.
Each one is.
Oh, we have, I mean, so what we have right now is.
Okay, there we go.
These are the definitions.
We have a definition, but we don't have the literal.
Right, like I, what, what does it look like in real life?
Right.
Or is it?
Yeah. There's a bunch of them in Bay City. I know that. So I don't know how they do it, but. There's firms.
Provisioning sells it to a retail. Processor. Or the processor then provisioning.
So the grower, grower, the processor.
Then maybe a retailer. And a micro business, that's just like a bar that.
Oh, I'm gonna go up. So there's a, here's a micro business definition. So it's a, it's a small operation. So I mean, it's a retailer. It's just a smaller retailer. And the micro business was done under the recreational law. Those aren't even listed in medical.
Those are for a person that's gonna do it all right there.
Well, they, yeah. Process and package and sell or transfer. To the, and then so the only one that's separate is that safety compliance. And see, again, it sounds like, you know, that's a third party. Entity that has to test for safety. So I'm picturing like, I, I picture like the lab. Maybe that's not a, at all what it is, but. We need some pictures.
Well, it's like a transporter. Uh, we don't know that if they pick something up, it must be delivered. Maybe they're not allowed at the store and their facilities to the next day of delivery. We don't know that. Or do we?
Will you say that again, Norm?
Well, if a transporter. Do, when they pick something up, are they allowed to keep it like overnight and deliver it the next day? Or must they deliver it to the next place? So therefore, if they can't keep it overnight or keep it in their facility. That, they'll never have a, a facility other than basically an office space.
Or.
Force to run out of.
Vehicles, yeah.
So that the actual drugs will never be there. At that so. Transport. Definitely. Maybe I was smoking someone's stuff.
I. Or you should, and we can understand this better. I'm thinking that the transporter is a person. Um. That works for a facility, like a Domino's Pizza. Delivery guy. So he's not gonna have it overnight.
But he's got to work for some corporation or somebody, some business that does the transporting.
No, the, the store provides that service. So Northern Roots in Ascot.
But it is a separate license. I mean, it's a separate license.
Oh.
So.
Yeah, and. I may interject to this, but I've done so far is exactly, it's like FedEx, it's like UPS, it's like. That's the kind of situation. It's a separate entity that has trucks or has facilities. In some areas in states, they're allowed to warehouse it overnight. And they pick it up, they. It's gotta go to an airport and the plane doesn't leave till morning or whatever it is, is that. That's a situation that at least I've found, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But it is like, it's a separate entity that. You know, would deliver.
Okay.
See, a secure transporter is a licensee that is a commercial entity located in the state that stores marijuana and transports marijuana.
Can you say? Here's one.
Tween facilities. Not, this doesn't, this isn't delivering to customers, but.
So here's the.
Got it.
I just, I just found this one. So this is a secure transporter. Evergreen Logistics. Your trusted partner for legal, fully insured and secure marijuana transportation. Look, they even have it coming out of their truck. So it is, it's a, you know, a business that's, and see, they have locations all over the place. Can't see the map for some reason, but. Um. They service.
Is that Roger City?
Yeah.
And I bet you that one down by Kent County is the same owner.
So like if I do, yeah, so it's actually a separate company. Transportation Solutions, let's see, Areas. Why Services? Here we go. Also Cash Transport, yeah. Hmm, transporting cash. So I mean. This is just a business, you know?
It's like the Brink's, Brink's truck.
Yeah.
So this, to me, still it belongs in your business districts or your. Or your manufacturing. If they wanted to locate, but it sounds like, shoot, this one right here serves the area.
Yeah.
So I don't know that any would come. Cause they already are served. So. Back to the table. You know, so the city has, I'm just in their industrial districts. I had put them just, you know, temporarily in your manufacturing and your B three. But it, it, I guess it could also be B two. Do you, are you still thinking about the ag and the forest record, does it make more sense to keep them in the business?
Yes, wherever you put them, you're still gonna have residential. Have that issue no matter where you go. Even in forest recreation. Same thing as agriculture, you know, heavy residential. We don't have a lot of.
Yeah, you, you, I mean, you're probably gonna have more arguments from people in ag and forest rec. Than if you kept them in your B or your M's. Just because it's a business, you know, it's an actual business.
We put any locations that can be two or three that are bought. Residential properties require extra da-da-da-da-da.
Well. I mean, they, so just it being especially used, they kind of already do. Because they do require notification. They require that, you know, you're showing that you're not going to affect the neighbors. I mean, I think it's gonna be. Difficult, honestly, to show that, that you're not gonna affect the neighbors unless it's something like a. Safety compliance or whatever that. You know. Probably, to me, it doesn't seem any different than if there were some other kind of safety compliance business, right? That is testing some other kind of product. To me, the ones that are. Well, honestly, the, the one to me that probably has more effect. Is the grower. Because. You know, there can be odor, or processors, I guess, there can be odor. And um, I was on a webinar today that uh. Consumers Power was talking about the electrical requirements for growers in, in particular. And he said, that's something that, you know, a lot of communities don't think about ahead of time, and, and there was one community in particular that. It's getting a ton of growers coming into their township and they did not have the electrical power to handle it. So I guess that's just a consideration, not that there's anything you can necessarily do about that, but it maybe is something. That you put in, if you're gonna adopt an ordinance, you say that, you know. They should make contact with the electrical company ahead of time to make sure that the site is ready for something like that. Because I guess. Some of them find out after the fact that, after they buy the property, that it's not ready for that kind of electrical.
Would we write that in to our?
I, I think it's a good thing, just to put it in, like, not that you're gonna review it, you know, you're not gonna review it, planning commission, that your job isn't to. Be expert electricians, but. That's something that they should be able to say, yes, we have made contact with. You know, the electric company. To discuss this, so at least you know ahead of time that they're doing that, and it's not gonna, they're not gonna, you know. After this whole thing gets approved, like the growers get approved, then they go, oh. Well, we didn't know that that electrical wasn't, you know, available there, like apparently happens in other communities, so. We could put a. Show us, show us, you know, just, it's just, it's like when, you know, we put in there, oh, you've gotta. Be able to prove that, like, you've got M dot, you know, approval for your driveway on a state highway or something like that, you know? Like they talk contingent upon that stuff.
The utilities.
Yeah, your utilities are sufficient to support. Cause I'm sure you'd need water.
Yeah.
Water, sewage.
And they say, this guy from. From, from consumers, he said, what real, what really gets them is when they're, they start stacking the licenses. So they have stacked grower licenses, meaning, you know, they're allowed this much, and then they stack it on with another grower license and another and another. Which, you know, that's a huge electrical. Requirement for stacked growing licenses. So. It's just something, I guess, to. Just be on the lookout for or something, and we gotta include something in here, I don't have it written in here right now, cause I just heard that today, but. So growers in your manufacturing is probably fine, it's those growers that might wanna go out and ag and forest rec. Those are the ones where your electrical is probably not ready out there, but that doesn't mean they shouldn't go out there, but. That's the one to probably keep an eye on.
But we can have that notated in the ordinance if you're in this. Okay.
Or anywhere, just we wanna make sure they're all. Prepared for that. Question, I guess.
Yeah.
I had an experience today that. I was next to. This far away from a marijuana plant that I'd never seen before. My nephew has one that he's growing. And. The odor that comes off this plant is probably about this big. And. This is outdoors and you could smell, so you can imagine what it's like and put a bunch of these things inside of a roof building.
Yeah.
But it's my first experience of actually seeing. A marijuana plant with that one. And it was interesting, but it's also. That they'll just grow, except they won't take cold weather, they won't grow, I guess frost doesn't mean, so they're perishable crop.
Was it a? Bad odor or?
It was something I wouldn't wanna have to be smelling all the time.
It's like a skunk.
It's like a skunk.
Little perfume smell.
That's why they call him Pepe Le Pew.
That's exactly why they call him Pepe Le Pew.
One of the, one of the things. That we would include for sure is, you know, when they're submitting. Their application, and I would, I would take what I wrote up for, for, for the city of Alpena. They need to submit to you, like, how are we controlling order, orders, you know, you, you're, I, I wouldn't. You, you're not telling them how to do it, they're the experts, right, so. They need to submit to you, here's our plan for controlling orders. And that's what, you know, like right now, that's what they, that's what they're submitting in Alpena. Is, here's what we're doing, or, you know, same, same thing applies to other issues, not just odor, but you know, like safety compliance. You show us how you're, how you're. How your safety, what your safety compliance plan is. You know, if it's, I mean, most of them, every single one, actually, no, there's one, all but one that I've seen so far, they're excellent. I mean, they are well thought out and very detailed, there were, I've only come across one that was like, yeah, we're gonna throw in a safe. You know, that was the only one that was like, okay, yeah, that's not adequate enough, so. They usually have this stuff well done when they submit it to you.
Is there like marijuana odor meter, like there is a decibel meter?
No.
I mean, as far as. Some person next door could say, your marijuana smells and I don't like it, but everybody else, they don't smell.
That's a good question.
Something that says, where is this level at?
I don't know.
Like they're smoking it, you know, you can, you can tell.
Oh, yeah.
And so. Wherever you are. Like so many, people are allowed to grow so many plants of their own. And we don't, we don't control that.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, if you have somebody that is complaining about growers. Through this in my little bitty brain, but um. If somebody could say, I'm getting an odor, what are you gonna do about it, but everybody else, there is no. So is there a odor machine or?
I don't know. Like an air scrubber.
I mean, if, if there a machine, it would have to be something that. Really measures the odor of anything.
Yeah, well, the growing facilities have to have scrubbers.
They do.
Yeah, that's at least what I've been told about the U P ones, so. O2 and, and the, and the. O two.
So when they, they just can't exhaust it into the.
Yeah, that's a big thing, they can't. You know, an interesting thing, while we'll give Denise a break too, and just a little bit on the table for information. Is that I've had the opportunity to look at some other situations. A bunch of deeds recently. And you know, now on a lot of warranty deeds, there's a paragraph in the bottom, this property shall not be used. In the manufacturer growing or anything having to do with marijuana.
Really interesting.
And warranty deeds, I've been seeing. Addresses.
Deed restrictions. A deed restrictions.
Yeah, under deed restrictions or exclusions, even on the insurance policy, there's an exclusion on title insurance now. Because it's legal federally, so the insurance company jumped right on that and said. And untitled insurance, so. So that's just something.
So is that something voluntarily put on their deed or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we're looking at where we want it, and we're doing that as zoning, but. In the land transfer business, if you will. And the legalities of it, now we're able to put that on there, where they can restrict use. And pass it on as an exclusion or as a, as a contingency of the. It's interesting, I never knew that, but I just ran across.
Yep. So I guess in terms of this table, do you want to make some tweaks to it or? Besides, well, I guess. What's shown up there right now, what do you wanna, what do you wanna change?
I think we should just, maybe just uh, let us get a chance to review this too. Cause I think we all have different ideas of what we might wanna tweak, so, but we gotta research it more.
Yep.
Um.
The, I'll just real quick, sort of, yeah, I know you, you guys are gonna read through this, but I'll real quick, just kinda go through the rest of this. Is what I would put in your supplemental development standards in Article seven, I would add a section seven forty-three. Which then talks about the fact that it's got, they've gotta be in compliance with the state licensing. They've gotta have a license from the township. Um, and it just says, you know, these are the things that they need to submit to you. Besides a site plan in terms of like proof of ownership. They've gotta show a pre qualification, because that's one of the things that the state of Michigan will give them, if they hit all of the state requirements, they'll give them a pre qualification letter. That they can turn around and give to the local municipality to say, yeah, this person meets all of our requirements. And then here's where, this is, again, this is taken from the cities, but I think it's pretty good. Where the different types of facilities have to submit to you different plans. For how they're gonna do things, you know, how are they gonna dispose of waste? Things like that, so, um. And then. These are, again, now, you don't, like I said, you don't have to keep these, but these are. Some of the things that the city requires you to submit, now theirs is in their licensing ordinance, it doesn't matter where we, I put it in the zoning. You know, in terms of, let's see, your business plan, you know, again, you can read through this more detail, let's see your security plan. You know, economic impact information, and then. Real, I guess this is the one to look at really closely is the standards. Um. You know, co-locating, can they co-locate, can two different types of facilities co-locate in the same building? So think about that, I just referenced the signage section, you know, usually limit, this is again, limiting hours of operation or drive-throughs. Consumption on premises, here's your odors, you do have a section on performance standards, which does talk about odors, so. Um, they would have to comply with that. This is their, you know, artificial light insecurity, again, we don't have to, obviously, I've talked about all these, but. Um. I guess. Outdoor growing, so, you know, some communities limit it, they just say, no, you can't do outdoor, outdoor growing, most of them are indoors anyways, but if there is an outdoor grow facility. You would think it would have to be, it would have to be out in ag or forest rec. Um. Then there's gives a setback, you know, fencing eight feet. And then this is some, I actually think this might have come from Harrisville. Just some standards on the indoor operation in terms of, you know, carbon filtration. Um, you know, changing filters. Um, the one I wanna talk about though, this is the separation distances. So um, this act, this example actually came from the, the Prescott County, which. There's facility in Rogers Township and a facility in Onaway. So they have marijuana facilities should not be located within five hundred feet. Of any building used for residential education, religious childcare, park, addiction treatment services. Um. And then. Let's see, Alpena has a thousand feet from schools and two hundred and fifty feet from other types of uses, I just gave you the five hundred feet example. Cause it was kind of in between the two. But one thing that Prescott County does. Is they, actually, I don't know if they've adopted this, this was something they were working on, that I was working on writing for them. They actually wanted to include like a waiver section, because they have the five hundred foot distance requirement. But like this last one that came into apply, they say, wow, we're like four hundred and fifty feet. So is there any way we can get a variance of fifty feet, well. It doesn't really qualify for a variance, cause it doesn't hit those variance standards that are in the zoning ordinance, cause you know, you know, they're very specific and you can't really. Waiver from those. So Prescott County actually had me write this in, that if the um. Basically, if the, the people that are in the, the buildings that are within that five hundred foot mark. That if they're notified and they don't have any objection, and you know, it's on file that they don't have any objection. Then the planning commission can waive that or can reduce the separation distance. As long as, you know, these three standards, not causing an adverse effect, not impairing public health, safety and welfare, not damaging neighborhood character. So they have a little wiggle room in theirs with that distance. Um, and I guess that was the end of it, so I just kinda wanted to hit some highlights of that, and then you read through it, again, if. You choose to go forward, we could include all of these or none of these or just a few, so I guess that's the. I guess that's the next question, is to think more about that table, read through this. And then at the next meeting, we can. Maybe finalize it, again, this is all contingent on it, if you go forward. So. Or do you wanna discuss any of these specifics?
What was my last question? Do we wanna discuss any specifics right now? I think we're, I think we're gonna do a review and then get more specific next meeting, Denise.
Okay, that, that's good, um. Once we get done with this, you know, the zoning half of it, if you guys choose to move forward. I already have like a licensing example that you can look at. Cause I would think the planning commission would have, would wanna look through that. Before you ever send it to the township board, just to kinda get some. Feedback on it. So, but that's, but let's do them separate, you know, let's worry about the zoning standards and then separately. Worry about the licensing, cause that's more of a process, here's the process that you go through for all of this, not just. The zoning approval, but the actual licensing approval that gets issued by, by the township, so.
Is there anything within the zoning that would affect the licensing and vice versa?
No, because we'll, we'll, what we'll do is we'll reference, whatever we put in zoning, I consider the zoning is like, here's our. Here's really our standards that you're meeting, and the licensing is more a process, so. At one point in the process, you know, once you submit your application and stuff. You gotta submit a site plan with all the stuff that's in here, all the stuff that's required on a site plan, and then any of this additional information. Um. So you just, we're gonna reference the zoning ordinance, and then probably with the zoning, we'll reference back, hey, make, you know, you can't, well, we already did. You can't get your site, I mean, you have, it's all contingent. Upon maintaining this, the license with the state and with the township, so.
Denise, you, um, when we were talking about that uh. Modification of the ordinance, uh. How many, did you say fifteen days we need to?
Yep.
See, we don't have fifteen days to come down our next meeting.
No, I know, I was, I was looking at that after you guys had that conversation, so, um. So, so really, you, yeah, you, for that thing. So, so really, yeah, for that thing. You're gonna have to go until what? Yep. Cause it all depends on what day it goes in the paper, I don't know how many days ahead of time you have to submit it to the paper before they publish it.
I don't remember what. But we, the fifteen days, that's. That we can't. You know, we can't deter from that, right? We have, have to make that, okay.
Yep, so. What?
We have Lynn do a. Cause if we don't have any cases, we don't need to meet on the eleventh, but we could meet. Sometime after the fifteen days and have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Prove the revision to the ordinance and then they talk more about this.
Yeah, and, and. I am gonna, I'm gonna tweak that ordinance that has the parking amendment, okay, cause. It wasn't till tonight, I had, I know, I hadn't seen the application that had the site plan, I hadn't seen any of that stuff yet, so. I, I was, I didn't know that was connected to the amendment at all, so. This is my first time seeing what, what actually was being proposed, I wish I had, I wish I'd seen that ahead of time, because. I have to add, because medical clinics and healthcare and stuff. Are not even listed as a use, as an allowable use in B three at all. So, I mean. We can amend that, but, but. You know, can't, that has to be amended in order to allow that facility, cause it's mostly a healthcare clinic with a coffee shop, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I don't know, Ri- Rick missed that with his report. See if it was an allowable use, so. We'll make it, it should be an allowable use, okay?
I don't, I don't see why it shouldn't be, but, yeah.
But we're gonna slip that amendment in there. I didn't know, I, I didn't wanna say it in the middle of it, but like, yeah, I gotta say it, so.
So. So we don't, us as a board don't, don't have to make a recommendation for you to add that in there. Unless somebody's in dis, if somebody's in disagreement with.
No, if it's not the right zoning, we gotta get it.
You can add it in there then. If somebody doesn't want you to, then we should hear them out, yeah. But I guess that the public, you know, when you have a public hearing, if, if they're in disagreement, they should come through with that. Why they, why they disagree.
So, so really, that site plan was approved contingent upon, not just the parking, but the. Actually putting it in as an allowable use, so I, I don't know how fast they wanna build, but remember, see, this is what stinks about amendments. You gotta do the public hearing, and you gotta go to the county, so then it's gotta go to the county for a review. And I don't know if the county's meeting in October.
The county doing up to chess.
We're damn lucky, we have one meeting in the last six months.
Oh, so you, so it's likely you're not meeting in October?
Well, yeah, that's the thing, I guess, is that. I guess it's pretty well known, I have a whole problem with the way the thing is established and what's going on with the county. With the townships, I've been pushing and pushing, pushing to get the townships. And the county altogether, so we can all get on the same page of what's going on. Uphill battle.
Why should we make things smart? Why work smart when you can just work hard?
And Denise, you're, well, you know, the thing of it is. It's the only time we're meeting is like, we just had a meeting because the, the plan was just completed for Hillman. So we had a, we had a meeting to. To prove the lad and do our due diligence on the plan. And that's the only, I mean, we, there's so many things out there, you know, there's the bridge, the projects, it's what we're doing here. And the colony is just not involved, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I get it. You know, one of the things that, I guess this is an idea, I don't, I don't know technically if this is legal, but I'll just tell you what Crawford County does. With this kinda situation where. They're not meeting very often and the township has an amendment and, you know, you either have to wait thirty days or. Whatever, if the county's not meeting, what, what Crawford County does is if they know they're not meeting. They send it around by email, they send the amendment and they ask for feedback over email, and I know, I don't know if that's. Legal, I don't know, the zoning enabling act does not specify, like, oh, there shall be a meeting at which, you know. They do, they ask feedback over email and then if there's nothing, which usually there isn't, other than a, yep, looks good. Then they just say, okay, this is our feedback there, we've, we've reviewed it, so then it gets back to the township board faster that way. So I don't know. Alpena County could do that.
I think that we've just been pushing on, haven't we?
Yeah, it's just.
We're not waiting on the county anymore, I guess we're not being good partners, but, or they're not, whoever's not, but.
It's just that thirty days is that's, that's like the legal requirement of like.
It's a requirement and it.
The township can't adopt it until either they hear back from the county or it's been thirty days. That's why Crawford County is doing that by email and saying, see there, you heard back from us, you know? I don't know.
I would think if they have a, like a electronic communications policy in their guidelines, they could do that.
I'll bet they don't.
Look at, look at me, finding a solution.
We won't have, our fifteen days will be October fifteenth, that's a prior.
Okay, fifteen days from when though?
Today.
But you gotta have the time to get it in the paper, so. So, have to be after that.
Be in the papers.
I mean, I can send a public hearing notice to Lynn first thing in the morning. And then she can figure out how fast she can get in the paper.
Okay.
And then she can communicate with you guys in terms of when you can all meet, yeah.
Okay, so we're good for tonight then?
I think so.
Okay, and you're gonna add that. Part, part, you're gonna modify the B three so to include medical facilities, okay?
Yep.
And we didn't object to that, so. Already, have a good week.
All right, thank you.